I call the Tuesday, September 12 work session to the Portsmouth City Council. And this is the year 2017. And Madam President, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
President.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And Dr. Pat.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Our first presentation this evening, Mrs. Alice Kelly, the Chief Financial Officer, will review the preliminary unaudited FY 2017 year in budget results and a reconfirmation of the city's bond ratings. The city's audit is underway since June, and final results for all the city's funds are anticipated to be presented during the November 28 public work session. With the second presentation, Mr. James Wright, City Engineer, will provide the Churchland Bridge replacement project update. The Churchland Bridge is a very important transportation asset for residents of the region, state government, and the U.S. military. The bridge carries over 30,000 vehicles a day. It provides preliminary access for regional employment, school, retail, health care centers, and for emergency service responders. The bridge is a part of the VDOT hurricane evacuation route and is part of the Department of Defense strategic highway network. Mrs. Kelly.
I don't know with Deppert not being here.
She'll get it. Where did she go?
I don't know. She walked out of the...
She's got to get it.
The remote control.
Look at that.
Change this guy.
You're going to have to go back to your first frame. Go back to your first frame.
This one?
Right there.
This is the one that clicked, right?
Yeah.
Okay. That just takes a minute.
Is it helping? There you go.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, City Council members. Before we get into the FY 2017 budget review results, I'd like to inform you that Moody's Investor Service just informed us this week that they performed a credit check on the city and that they confirmed the city's AA2 rating. Typically, the city is rated by bond rating agencies when we go to the market to sell bonds or if a major financial event occurs. But currently, in the past few years, rating agencies have been using our published information, budgets, and audits to review the financial condition of the cities and confirming ratings and providing a report to investors and the city. This was just done, and we received a draft report a couple of days ago, which confirmed our rating, our AA2 rating, which is a strong investment-grade rating. Key credit factors Moody's mentioned were included a healthy fund financial position, a good fund balance, a considerable tax base, and an adequate socioeconomic profile. Some of the challenges Moody's noted was our high debt level. We have a debt of $582 million. We have a current debt service level of $51 million a year. And we also have a high pension level. Our pension liability is $132 million. And just as a reminder, on this slide, I show the credit ratings agencies, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor, and Fitch. And I just wanted to point out that Moody's has a slightly different alphanumeric rating system, but it is the same as a AA rating for Standard &amp; Poor and Fitch. And so, we were very pleased to have that announcement with it. And we will get a final report this week from them. For preliminary year-end results, I'd like to remind Council that the numbers are projected and unaudited, and they reflect the estimated year-end balances as of June 30 and any known adjustments that needed to occur. For the city's FY 2017 year-to-date revenue, we have 99% of our budget or 1% under our budgeted revenue. And that year-to-date expenditures are 97% of our budget or about 3% under our budget. For, you know, obviously, the city had budget variances. And I'd like to point out some of our larger variances. Revenue shortfalls from the budget included our personal property tax. And as you recall, the city estimated this tax would be $1.7 million lower for the agreement between the state and VIG. The bridge loan document is being worked on for City Council's consideration in the next few weeks. Also, there were some significant tax refunds that we had in this category. Ambulance fees were slightly lower than budget as we increased the allowance to more appropriately reflect collection, and we also had to post an audit adjustment to correct the beginning accounts receivable balances. General District Court revenue, some other taxes, including sales and use tax and machinery and tools tax, were also lower than our budget. Our revenue was exceeded in real estate tax, restaurant food tax, investment income, penalty and other charges, and state law enforcement. So overall, our revenue budget was $2 million under budget. For our expenditures, departments were asked to review, reflect, refocus, and restore. And as part of this process, most general fund departments were able to achieve a 5% to 10% budget savings. However, there were some unbudgeted expenditures that occurred. Some were mentioned in the third quarter review. Hurricane Matthew and Hurricane, or Snowstorm Helena cost about $471,000. A further increase in fire overtime occurred. The retirement supplement and an increase in senior citizen disabled veterans' tax relief that was higher than budget. And then, we also had the violence and crime reversal assessment from Bupedeau-Dieu for about $45,000. Those were some of the unexpected, unplanned expenditures for the year. As per city code, the city is required to report all budget transfers over $50,000 to City Council, and then City Council has to approve any transfer over $100,000. Since March 31, there had been no transfers over $50,000, and the only transfer over $100,000 that is being requested for your approval tonight is the transfer to the Fire Department to cover overtime and benefit overages. Some reasons for this transfer include an increase in vacancies and not having vehicles being taken out of service. As of today, we estimate that the total impact to unassigned fund balance is flat for FY 2017. Both revenue and expenditures are lower than budget, and the use of budgeted fund balance is about the same as the increase to the fund balance at year-end. As the bridge loan from the state has not been received, the revenue for that will have to be recorded in FY 18. So, we started out with fund balance of 58.4, and we estimate that we'll end at 58.2 in fund balance. For FY 2018, the city continues to monitor federal legislative issues such as possible repeal of the Affordable Care Act, possible cuts to HUD and transportation funding. In addition, in FY 2018, there are certain revenue and expense accounts that are being analyzed, including VDOT revenue. The maintenance revenue to be received will be slightly lower as VDOT conducted statewide road classification audits, and Portsmouth had a few road classification changes. Our overtime for public safety, both fire and police, is still high as we work on filling vacancies. Our public utility revenue will be reduced by the Chesapeake contract. Debt service expenses will be under because we are not going to, we don't anticipate borrowing anything except for the QZAPs that will be issued. However, each of these impacts are being offset by strategically working to re-reflect and refocus and even restore some issues to offset these impacts and create cost savings and efficiencies. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes.
What is the Chesapeake Public Utility Contract?
A few weeks ago, a month ago, we extended our Chesapeake contract with the department, the utility department extended our, the Chesapeake's water department. I'm sorry. I'm not explaining that very well. There was a contract with Chesapeake. We extended that contract, which will extend the life of the contract, but in the meantime, the first few years of it will be a little bit lower revenue. And so, we're working on making sure that that doesn't have an impact to rates.
Yes, sir.
Just my QZAP.
QZAP.
QZAP. What for and how much?
They would be about $4.1 million. They're for the projects that are, for the educational projects in the city CIP. There are three projects that the schools has from their appropriation from FY 17 that we're putting in the city CIP projects. And then, we have a few other projects that have been approved in FY 18 that we can finance through QZAP bonds. And so, we'll be bringing back to Council that request in the next few weeks, September 26th, 25th?
25th.
Next Council meeting. Oh, I'm sorry.
Public work is 25th, 26th is the Council meeting.
We have a two-week public notice, so it's not...
Urgence of the smart boards was one?
Yes.
Yes. Did I see a hand up over here? Yes, sir.
The overtime issue with the public safety, fire, and police, can we get, if there's no objection from Council, can we get a report, a more detailed report on why these increases in overtime they were seeing? And if within that report, we can have some idea of positions that are being filled, positions that are open, where persons are working in those different departments so that we can get a close examination of what's going on with that overtime issue?
Everybody who came with that? Okay.
Yeah.
Is it clear? Okay. Any other questions?
Just one question. The over-budgeted items, specifically the investment income.
Yes.
How do we, I mean, how do we make up for that?
It's over budget, and it's a revenue, so over budget's a good thing. So, we had budgeted a lower amount than our investment. And that has to do with cash flow and how much money we had available to invest. And interest rates actually are rising a little bit, so we are getting a little bit more.
On the General District Court revenue, what drove that number?
We had budgeted a lot of revenue for toll expenses, toll charges that didn't come back to us to issue in court.
Toll charges.
I'm sorry. Toll.
All those penalties that they were going to charge.
So, the penalties that...
The penalty is right, right. So, we...
Registered or some cases?
And so, they hadn't come back to the court, so we didn't have the fees come back to us.
These are the ERC cases that they take...
Why? Yes.
So, that's a good thing.
Yes.
Other persons?
May I answer this, but personal property, was that, was that delinquencies or...
Really, the Commissioner of Revenue would have to really give you more of the detail of that. But what we can tell from it is the state and the VIG had lowered that personal property as well as some refunds that we had to issue. And so, that's why that was $2.6 million.
Any other questions?
Just one last one.
No, no, no.
The machinery and tool tax, was that the loss from the ports or is that from people who, businesses who didn't...
I couldn't tell you that. The Commissioner of Revenue would have to really be a little bit more detail on that.
On retail sales nationwide, more and more people are shopping online. Do you think that our reduction is a reflection of that trend?
Yes. And most cities are seeing, especially in the state of Virginia, are seeing that sales and use tax go down. Yes.
Yes, sir.
This may have been asked, the restaurant food tax.
Yes.
That increase, is that something that is increased over past budgets? Are we still below where we used to be or is this higher than where we used to be?
We're higher than last year's. I don't know the history of it, and I can...
I was just curious with the toll issue, how far down, and is this representing a rebound?
Sure. We're working on a five-year financial plan, too, and we will get the history of that and bring that back to Council in the next few months.
Figuring out what Dr. Whitaker just asked, could we have a five-year history of the sales and use tax and of the restaurant food tax? Just a bar chart comparison question.
Yeah.
While we're getting that information, I think it would be good to see the percentage of the delinquencies relative to the restaurant food tax and the, I know we can't get specifics, I guess, but we can, we can get a total number, a figure for delinquencies.
We will inquire and get, bring back what we can get from the Treasury.
And the number of days delinquent.
On your first slide, the good news about maintaining our strong credit rating, do you anticipate S&amp;P and Fitch implementing a off-year examination?
They have all said they were going to be doing it. We were a little bit surprised that they did it without telling us until they got the report. And I received a call from Moody's saying, "I want to confirm your email address," and sent us this draft report last week. So, they, it does seem to be a trend that the rating agencies are doing that once a year.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mayor, I would like to follow with saying, once the Finance Department received that information, they are given a short window of time to respond and get that information back. In fact, they actually had...
Well, they gave us one day, and we asked for a couple more days just to double-check all their numbers and make sure that their numbers are...
One day to get and answer all of their questions as it pertains to those areas of which she called your attention.
You're working on the CAFRA, you said?
Yes.
And we expect to get that in December, is that it?
November 28 is what we are scheduled to bring it to Council. And we're working very hard with that.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
And the highest rating is, what, AAA?
Triple A.
You go back to the, yeah.
That is a triple A.
Well, good job on maintaining our credit rating.
Everybody's.
Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Pat.
Mr. Wright will come forward with the Churchland Bridge replacement project update.
Here to give you an update on Churchland Bridge replacement project. This project will replace the existing northbound span, Churchland Bridge, carrying High Street over western, over the western branch of the Elizabeth River. This span has been found to be structurally deficient and uses an obsolete pin and hanger design element. Ashto and FHWA have recommended that the removal of bridges with this design element. A primary justification for this project is to improve safety of the traffic public by reducing the risk of catastrophic bridge failure. This project also includes the rehabilitation of the southbound span. And in addition to improving the safety of the river crossing, the new bridge will add new mobility options for residents, as it will include a 14-foot multi-use path. High Street, including the Churchland Bridge, has been designated by the city as a multi-use, multimodal corridor, and the city plans to complete a number of projects of bike and walkway improvements in this corridor concurrently with the bridge replacement project. So, total estimated cost for the bridge project is $35.5 million. They'd have a contribution of just over 62%, and the local contribution is about 37.6%. So, we are currently in final plan review, working through permitting and right-of-way issues. A major component of this project is the verification and relocation of utilities as needed. Some utility work will occur prior to construction, with the remainder occurring during construction. The current issue that we're trying to work our way through is that the project team is working with NiSource to verify the location of a high-pressure gas main near the bulkhead for the channel marker to determine impacts during construction. Permitting. For bridge projects, one agency becomes the lead federal agency after a pre-application meeting for the project. Coordination of federal clearances, certification, and concurrence for various agencies flow through the permit process for the lead agency. The U.S. Coast Guard is the federal lead agency for this project. Once affirmation is received from their federal partners, then they issue a permit. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers will issue their permit once the Coast Guard issues theirs. Permit application for this project was submitted in October, but due to staffing turnover and workload, we were recently asked by the Coast Guard to have our environmental coordinator coordinate with other federal agencies to basically get through this process. And since they've made that request, those certifications and concurrences have been flowing in steadily in the weeks since. So, as you can see, there are a number of agencies and federal acts involved. You see 12 agencies involving 17 acts or executive orders that you need to get concurrent or affirmation for. As far as state permits goes, the city has received its permit for VMRC, VDHR, Department of Historic Resources, and the Department of Environmental Quality have indicated that they will provide concurrents for the bridge project. This project is a locally administered project. What that means is projects with either state or federal funds that are administered by the locality. VDOT provides a project manual for guidance and training opportunities throughout the year for project personnel. The majority of the projects that we have going on in our city as they relate to transportation issues are actually this type of project, with Turnpike Road and MOK Project actually being VDOT-controlled projects, all other projects being controlled by the city. As a funding partner, VDOT provides reviews at various stages to ensure compliance with state and federal requirements so that the project can receive reimbursement, and they will have limited oversight during construction. Where we currently are, we anticipate a fall-winter advertisement with construction in the spring. It's a two-year construction period. Traffic shifts will place all traffic one way in each direction on a single span. For the southbound lane rehabilitation, certain work required on this span will be required prior to shifting traffic on it. The major, the majority of this work will be underneath the bridge. For those portions of the work impacted by vibrations from traffic, that'll cause the traffic to shift over to the northbound lanes. The northbound replacement will possibly be an 18-month traffic shift to the southbound lanes. Once we get to the advertising point, we'll set up a project link on the city website so that citizens can get updates and information on the project. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions? You're doing rehab on the southbound lanes first.
Correct.
About three months. About three months. I know the city is managing, you using contractors from within the city or...
So, as part of the process to set up the template, we have several firms under annual services contracts. And we did a sort of targeted RFP between those groups, interviewed them, and selected the best group to help us manage that project, just so it turns out that the same group is going to help us manage this project, manage the Dominion Boulevard project.
Given all the highway construction that's going on in Hampton Roads, do you see any problems as far as bidders are concerned?
I'm sorry.
Given the great amount of highway construction that's going on in Hampton Roads, do you see any problems on getting bidders' interest in this project?
Not necessarily there should be problems. There are going to be challenges, specifically with traffic control and coordination with other projects that are in, that are in the area. So, we're going to have to take a lot of detail to work through the MOT plans for this project and then coordinate that with every other project that's going on to make sure citizens are aware of what routes are available to them so that they can try to minimize those delays to their travel.
And we estimate 18 months, but weather, weather and winter will have impact on our project. So, we say 18 months, but we know that that may end up in 21 months or 21, 20 months based on the weather. Could you speak also, Mr. Wright, on over the past, how you have engaged the public in letting them know far in advance this, this project was coming?
So...
I remember you hosted the meeting.
So, we hosted one meeting at Bydaway when the project was first kicking off as sort of a general information meeting, as required by the LAP process. Once the project was at the 60% plan stage, we had another public meeting at Bydaway. And then, we had a one, I think, a week after at the Churchland Library. And so, the information has gone out to the public on three separate occasions about this project. The project team is discussed. Once the, once the project is advertised and we have a signed contract to have another meeting, that'll give citizens information about the project website and allow them to ask and hear the questions about the actual construction process that we'll be getting ready to embark on.
What project, what bridge replacement project is next in line, and what's the status of that project?
For us, it's Paradise Creek. We're doing the preliminary engineering report at the moment. We have funding for design. We'll be, we attempted to get funding through several state programs within the past, say, 18 months or so. We were unsuccessful. Those programs are coming back up, and so, we'll go back out and try to get funding to complete that process, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Realistically, on that project that the mayor mentioned, Paradise Creek, what's a general timetable when that can be expected to be, at least construction?
I think we just, and going with my memory now, 2019, I think, is for construction to start. That's an 18-month project.
Will it last that long? Will it last that long?
That one's a little bit more tricky just because of the way you have to build that bridge, and so, it may actually last a little bit longer than that. So, you don't have the luxury of putting traffic on another span. Churchland Bridge has one federal ID number, but it's actually two separate bridges. You have 1950 Bridge and 1974 Bridge, whereas Paradise Creek is just one bridge. And so, that's some of the decisions that we'll have to make during the design of how to actually construct it and handle traffic while the project's ongoing, so.
Other questions?
At the same time, Mayor, we're going to have to make sure, and I shared in my opening remarks, the many entities that use this bridge every day. When it goes down to one span and 30,000 cars coming through a day, people going to school, school buses, it's a lot of adjusting of how people gauge their time to get to where they want to go. And it's going to be, it's going to be an inconvenience if you have to come that way, but there are other ways that you could get to where you're going. But we're going to just, you know, keep the public informed, and it's going to be about an 18- to 20-month time period with us having that one span.
In this presentation, you mentioned that the Churchland Bridge is a critical component of the federal highway system, the defense highway network.
Yes.
Doesn't that also apply to Paradise Creek? Can we make that argument?
Yes, it is. It's part of Strawnet as well.
And it's, it's been designated?
Yes, sir.
We're looking for the money.
But still no state funding?
Not yet.
Well, if there's revenue sharing, that's at some state, but not as much as I like.
We'll have an opportunity to go...
Yes, ma'am.
...back out to request again, and we will.
Other questions about this project, which is a big deal? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Pat?
Mayor, you have two report backs in front of you. The first is doing last night's public work session. There was a question on the manner of payments to Portsmouth Public Schools, and I'm reporting back that since 2014, the city has transferred 1/3 of the quarterly appropriation to Portsmouth Public Schools on a monthly basis. You have before you, and it's highlighted on page three, that on May 9, 2017, in the city manager's report titled FY 2018 Operating CIP Budget Ordinance, referenced to the last page highlighted, of which the transferring of funds is stated, and we are following the process in which the city council approved. The second report back...
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You said since 2014. Can you say that again?
Since 2014, the process in which the 1/3, 1/3 has been paid, that it's been since 2014, and this is '17.
You said a 1/3, 1/3. What's the 1/3? That's 2/3. What am I going to follow you on that? What am I following wrong there?
The payments that we're paying quarterly are the $4.2 million that they get a month.
The $112.
$112.
Right.
Right.
And you said that's been since 2014?
14, the research.
So, what was done prior to 2014?
I don't know. I would have to research that.
Can you let us know?
I can. I'll get, have to research that and get it back to you through an email. The second, last night, we had a question regarding the Cedar Grove Cemetery fence, and I have a report back on that. And tonight, that item, which I will go over shortly with you, comes for your report approving the funds that have come in. We have funding for, in the CIP, that we are going to combine with the funds that we've gotten from the damages of Hurricane Matthew. And so, we are looking to be able to complete and possibly, and this is what the Cemetery Association is asking, that we will put the wrought iron fence to match what they had already started, thereby opening up the cemetery. Okay? All right. If at this time, Mayor members...
Yes, sir.
At that cemetery, you said the Cemetery Association. So, that's a, is that a city-owned, that's a city-owned cemetery?
That is a city-owned.
Yeah, it's a city-owned cemetery.
So, who is the, who is this association?
It's the Cedar Grove...
Foundation.
Foundation.
It's a not-for-profit.
Okay. And so, they're responsible for some maintenance of it?
No, we maintain the cemetery. The cities maintain the cemetery in terms of cutting the grass and that kind of thing.
So, what was the, what was the issue with the wrought iron fence?
There's not an issue with the wrought iron fence. There is a, the cemetery wall has fallen down. It's gone since Matthew. We're going to replace the wall. We now have the money, which will be before you all approve tonight. And the wall that fell down was a red brick wall. And so, what we are looking and considering is to extending the wrought iron fence, which is right there, you can see it, from Effingham, and extending it all the way around where there's no fence at this time. But in your report, and I'm going to ask Mr. Wright to come back up for a minute, there are some critical items that, well, not items, critical issues that have to be addressed that pertains to two graves.
So, the city, so the city put in that fence originally?
Well, that fence has probably been there since 1800.
Yeah.
I mean, it's old.
I was curious if it was done by private funds or was that fence built by the city?
That's, that's...
It goes, the fence was there since 1800s. So, it's been, I mean, the wall has been there.
The city started that cemetery in 1832.
32.
And it's always been a city cemetery. That wall is quite old, and just north of the area where it fell, the wall is both a brick wall and wrought iron structure on top of the brick wall. And so, what the foundation has suggested is that they just pick up that theme and carry it south.
No, I was just curious whose wall it is. Is it the city's wall or the foundation's?
It's ours, the city's wall. It's the city's wall.
Well, I thought we didn't know who built it. That's why I was curious who built the wall.
Well, the cemetery was, the wall was built probably 1832. The city has been in charge of the cemeteries. I was in charge of cemeteries in 1986, so it predates me. Okay? Thank you.
To follow up on the association, what's the history of the association, and what part do they play in the operation of the cemetery?
I would have to...
I can answer that.
Yeah, I can say.
It was founded 11 years ago. It's a not-for-profit, 501(c)(3). They do maintenance of monuments and structures. Being 1832 and the type of material that people use for headstones, they deteriorate on their own, and they may crumble. What they do is go back and repair it.
Thanks.
Okay. At this time, Mayor, if there are no other questions, I'll go through the city manager's report items. Tonight, in the city manager's report, you have 12 items, and this is the most that we have had in some time. Five of these items have been thoroughly discussed, and they are the five CMRs for the reappropriation of the Portsmouth Public Schools reappropriations. I'll start with the CSA supplemental funds. You have before you an adoption of an ordinance tonight, accepting the Child Services Act supplemental funding of $189,394. This money comes from the Virginia Department of Social Services, and it goes into the Children's Service Act Fund. That fund is a service that is designed to identify and intervene early with young children and their families who are at risk of developing emotional or behavioral problems. And social services, behavioral health care, the communities, the local court services, and the Department of Health all work together in addressing issues through the CSA supplemental funds. The next is the Local Emergency Management Program Grant. It's adoption of an ordinance accepting a local emergency program grant in the amount of $57,992 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and appropriating that said into the Grants Fund for use for the Department of Fire and Rescue and Emergency Services for emergency management, purchase of emergency management equipment, supplies, and training. The next is the adoption of an ordinance accepting a radiological emergency preparedness program funding in the amount of $3,500. And the purpose of the radiological emergency preparedness program is to support activities of local emergency management agencies in establishing and maintaining the operation of emergency plans in case there is any nuclear accident. So, this is what would be monitored, that this would go for. The next is an adoption of an ordinance confirming a transfer of $266,604 from the non-departmental salary employment bonus line item of the FY 2017 General Fund Budget to the Public Safety category of the FY 2017 General Fund Budget to fund overtime and benefit costs for the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services incurred in FY 2017. The next is the Virginia Department of Emergency Management Hurricane Matthew Cedar Grove Cemetery Wall Project, adoption of an ordinance accepting public assistance grant revenue in the amount of $87,272.34 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, better known as FEMA, for reimbursement of costs to repair the Cedar Grove Cemetery necessitated by Hurricane Matthew. The next five are the CMRs for the school, and I will give their titles. The Increased Capital Improvement Fund Education 2 Add 3 School Projects. The Grant Fund, Portsmouth Public Schools PPS reappropriation of FY 2017 Unspent Grant Funds. The General Fund Reappropriation Request for Portsmouth Public Schools for FY 2017 Unassigned General Fund Balances, Net Position of Risk Management Funds, and the General Fund encompasses as of June 30, 2017. The Textbook Fund, Portsmouth Public Schools reappropriation of FY 2017 Unused textbook funds. And lastly, the fifth would be the Risk Management Fund reappropriation of FY 2017 Preliminary Net Position into the FY 2018 Portsmouth Public Schools Risk Management Fund. The next is the Jail Mental Health Program Grant, adoption of an ordinance accepting jail mental health program grant, funding in the amount of $939,435 awarded by the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and administered by the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, and appropriating said amount into the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to fund therapy and case management services at the regional jail. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, if you remember, this was a competitive grant, of which the state government, based on some challenges with mental ill inmates in jails across the state, there were over 30-something applicants. They had indicated that they would only fund six, and the city of Portsmouth, working with the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, with Sherry Neal taking the lead in the entire process, we were one of the six cities awarded. The program is up and operating and making an impact in the Hampton Regional Jail. Adoption of a resolution to approve the FY 2018 Performance Contract for the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services. Part of the state's responsibility in cities receiving funds for the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services is to enter into a performance contract. The city must approve the performance contract in order to receive allocations of state and federal funds from the DBHDS Office of Support Services. The projected state and federal allocations for fiscal year FY 2018 are $5.3 million and $1.2 million, for a total of $6.4 million or $6.5 million. The city is required to give PDBHS a minimum of 10% of the local or total budget match. That concludes the 12 items that will come before you tonight.
Yes, sir.
I have two questions. The first one goes to the ordinance, 17-393, where it says adoption of an ordinance confirming a transfer. Normally, it'll just say adoption of an ordinance transferring. So, when it says confirming, are you saying that it already occurred, and now council has to go back and confirm?
No, I would, I, the titles and the language of a item in the city's manager's report is actually city attorneys, Mr. Miller, working with it, so I can't speak to the language.
Well, yes, I'm asking, has this transfer already occurred?
No, we have not done any transfer. That we're looking to do that tomorrow, once these are adopted.
And so, this is for last year's budget?
Yes.
So, we just had a presentation that the fire overtime was $200,000.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought this was the, I was on another, thinking of something about the schools.
17-393.
I haven't now. State what you're asking again.
Okay. At 17-39 on page...
I see. I haven't. You're asking the word confirming. Why is it confirming?
Adoption of an ordinance confirming a transfer.
Right.
Normally, it just says ordinance...
I'll have, I'll, city...
Would you go to the log turn, please?
Sure. Right, because they have been paid.
Typically, we would have come to council asking for the transfer because at the end of the year, the overtime was not posted until July. We did not realize it was going to be over, and so the overtime has been posted, and the FICA benefits were posted, and we became into a negative. And so, therefore, while we didn't physically do a transfer, the account is in a negative position, so we have to do a transfer. So, it's, typically, we would have asked council to make the movement, but we already paid the bills, so it's needed to have that department not be in a negative position.
So, you can expand from an account. I thought it was over $100,000 ahead to get...
Right. Right. Council has to approve a transfer over $100,000. So, in the general fund in total, the general fund is old, and so there's enough money there.
So, how was this done without council approval?
That's why we're asking for approval, because we haven't done the transfer. We need to confirm that a transfer needs to be done. Typically, we would do it before we even posted the bill, before we paid the bill, but because the overtime didn't come in until after, we, it's behind, it's behind the curve.
So, I thought you said the transfer had already occurred.
We haven't done the physical transfer, but because we have to do it because the amount, the expenses have been posted, so...
So, the figure you gave us earlier of $225,000 for overtime, now, is that figure 225 plus this amount?
Yes.
So, so they have incurred $491,640?
No, I'm sorry. It's 225 plus an additional amount to make up to the 266. Some of the FICA and the other benefits needed a transfer also.
So, the 266 encompasses the 225?
Yes.
The other issue is 17-395, and this is for council. I'm asking that council would consent to remove item A from the agenda because that's the compact between city council and Portsmouth Public Schools.
I think it's already done.
Councilmember C, your packages have been updated. You printed it before we updated.
So, this is...
That's been taken off.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
You have that in your box.
That's all right.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, this concludes the presentation for tonight.
Any comments on the public hearing? I know that's not part of your city manager's report.
No.
We'll hear that. City council liaison reports, and I'll start with Councilwoman Simmons.
Sorry, because I didn't have to.
Okay.
Just want to give a small update. With the Portsmouth redevelopment housing authority, they did have an audit by the Clifton-Larson-Alen Audit Groups, and they reviewed such things, such as their bank accounts, reconciliations, financial statements, and of course, their information technology. They found that some things were in order, but they did also make some recommendations for some changes with them, with that. But overall, they're looking pretty good with their internal processes. They also have something that's good for the public. They have been approved, the board actually approved a resolution for the, what we know as the Section 8. It's the Section 8 Management Assistant Program. They call it CMAP. So, that will help to assist 63 additional families who are seeking housing vouchers. And so, those were available June 1 through June 30. That resulted in additional $13,223 being added to their annual budget for Section 8 housing. And of course, we all know about the Shaping the Future Summit, September 30. So, that was announced. Brian Swetts was visiting at that meeting there and also at the planning commission.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Well, our next Park and Authority Board meeting is not till September 28, and the next meeting for the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority is October 18, so I won't have updates until after those meetings.
Thank you.
I do want to bring one additional comment. I did mention to Dr. Patton, city attorney, Solomon, and mayor about the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority. They have made some changes with their liaisons, how their liaisons attend their meetings, of course, sitting in through the full meeting, but they have asked that the city council liaison recuse themselves from their closed meeting, and that is of some concern. Of course, they want me to sit in as part of the city business, anything that they are doing to convey properties or buy and purchase, but after the city business is over, they've asked me to leave the meeting. So, we have our city attorney will be looking into that and their bylaws to see if that's something, you know, that is of nature. I haven't known for any other city council liaison to be asked to recuse themselves from the closed session portion of a boards and commission, and I've also asked them about recording their meetings. Mayor had asked that all boards of substantial size and interest for the community, PRHA, Planning Commission, EDA, be recorded or either attend a meeting so the public can be informed of what's going on. They have said they are looking into their recording devices, and they haven't followed up with that. So, I'm requesting that we get more information on why I'm being asked to be recused from the meeting, and also why they're not recording their meetings so that the public can be informed.
That's the Portsmouth redevelopment housing authority. Did they take a vote on that? Did they vote on that, or how did that?
I was called to a special meeting when I was on vacation by the chair, Davy Smith, and their legal counsel, Karen James, and I went into a meeting on that Tuesday because I didn't get back to Virginia until that Monday, and they told me that their new executive director wanted to be able to get on board... director wanted to be able to get on board with their board, and they've asked me to recuse myself from the closed session part of the meeting after the city business is taken care of. So they said their personnel matters and any other business that they discuss in closed meetings, they don't want the council liaison to be included on that. And then also, I was removed from the table, because they have a square table, Dr. Whitaker, you know what their room looks like, and because their person who is now the administrative assistant taking the minutes was not able to hear from the back row of the seat, so they've moved her to the table, so now I'm on the back row. Well, I can hear, but I'm looking around heads, and you know, I'm not the tallest person in the room, and so, you know, and I'm balancing a notebook on my lap that I dropped several times, and you know, so I think we may need to look at, you know, some additional space maybe in this conference room.
Look at some other things, because that's the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority. You know, when the federal government got to be paying money back, we pay it back, no matter what, what happens there, we're holding, we're holding the bag, so we don't even know what's going on there, and I got a serious, I got a serious problem with that. And if that board doesn't, doesn't see the seriousness of that, maybe we need to reexamine some more things, because that's, for me, that's a nonstarter. When they have issues, when the money's got to be paid, it's our, it's our business. So when they go and close door on top of those things, it's still our business, because it's our money. And every dollar they get passes through this city, no matter where it comes from, it passes through here to them, and no other board has ever, to my knowledge, well, listen to you and Peter, been that long to me, has ever, have you heard that before?
No.
Been asked to leave.
No.
Okay, so, but Mayor, for me, we need to get into that, and that's a nonstarter. If we can't fix it with this board, we know what to do.
I think, I think there are issues even deeper than that. I know Dr. Patton shared with me the interaction between the Hampton Housing Authority and their city council. They're, they're part of the decision process, and things aren't decided in absence of city council. And this latest thing, I have a problem with the board or somebody with the Housing Authority deciding not to prosecute for the theft of eight thousand dollars. I'm glad our Commonwealth attorney went forward with it, did her own investigation, and got a true bill on four indictments, but that is not their money. As the vice mayor just said, their money is our money, is our citizens' money, and no one, when they have identified a theft, should decide that they're not going to go forward and prosecute. That is completely alien to me for the responsibility that that board has. So I think, I think we, at another setting, I think we need to go over exactly what our relationship, what our responsibilities are, reference to the Housing Authority. You know, even earlier this year, I understand a business that was interested in coming to the Midtown area, just because a board member didn't particularly like that particular type of food, the board said, oh, okay, I guess we won't entertain that. That is not a healthy decision process, and the way they've treated one of our council members, that, that just is further evidence that there's a disconnect.
Well, Pierce, you only met with how many people?
Two.
So you don't know if the whole board voted or not?
And they didn't. I had two other board members to say they didn't know anything about.
So the chair and the...
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel, executive director?
He was not in the room.
So the chair and legal counsel decided that you can't be in it?
Correct.
All right.
Mayor, members of council, I have never been to a PRJ board meeting, and I don't know where they're held, but maybe about three or four months ago, the question was, why does, why does the city have board meetings where the public can't sit down? And, you know, I'm thinking, right here, the public is sitting down, and I said, well, every time we have a meeting, economic development, whatever, meetings, the public, they're chairs, so the public sit down, and the comment made, well, if you, and I said, I've never been, go to PRJ, I don't know if it's a small room, you could answer, well, it seems as if the, if the public, it's not enough seats, or the room is too small, and so I just said, you need to call PRJ, because we don't set their room, so.
Madam Clerk, they could meet the council chamber, could they not?
They could meet in this room.
They could meet in this room anyway.
Listening to the discussion here, does council want me to send the chairman a letter on my behalf expressing concern, and also expressing about this, for sure, but also expressing concern that their meetings are not accessible, and ask them to change the venue?
But if they're here or there, then, already have the video.
You know, the letter's nice, Mayor, but I think eyeball to eyeball would, would be appropriate, because, because actually, they disrespected a city council member, and I just got, I just got a problem with something, so I think as the leader of the council, you need to look them in the eyes and say that's not acceptable.
Do you agree? Okay.
Thank you.
HR TAC and HR PDC meets later this month, so I'll have a report at the next meeting. Any other things for our agenda? Yes, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, I just wanted to give you all some information. A month or so back, when we were discussing small cell 4G and 5G technology, there was a question asked about potential fiscal impacts. When Senate Bill twelve-eighty-two was submitted, there was a fiscal impact statement. Several cities estimated their fiscal impact in terms of the loss of revenue to be somewhere in the range of two-hundred to one-hundred thousand dollars. That would have been the city of Danville gave an actual number, Lynchburg, and the city of Roanoke, some of the, I believe Norfolk was asked, and they could not give a number, but they expected that it would be a reduction in revenue for the city. So I just wanted to report that back to you all.
What, what, they said what the basis of the revenue?
Much like the city of Portsmouth, when you have an application, there were fees associated with whatever background you had to perform, just like we have fees for our various services, the city would have fees associated with plan reviews and that sort of thing, so it would be the loss of those, well, not the loss, the state law set the fee, as opposed to its locality setting the fee.
All right, yes, sir.
I have a follow-up issue for council to consider from last night, our discussion on the monument, and I know that there has been a general discussion about the monument being moved to Cedar Grove Park. In the interest of time, would, would it be, well, not would it be, but can we direct the engineering department to come back with some alternatives other than Cedar Grove just in case Cedar Grove is not going to be an available location, so that when that issue comes, we will not have to waste time looking for alternative sites, but that alternatives would have already been investigated?
Pardon me?
Sorry. I say, I don't think that's up to the engineering department.
Well, I know that there were some studies that, the ground and as far as the sturdy was.
Yeah, that's going to have to be done, any place it's located, because this is Hampton Roads, and what has...
Right, well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, instead of us waiting and finding out maybe that Cedar Grove is not appropriate, and then we would have to delay it again to look for another site, if that can already be in place, so that we would have potential alternatives.
The next cemetery that's on that route, London Boulevard, is Oak Grove, which is also Cedar, I mean, a city cemetery. Is it, is that what you're asking?
Any, any other city cemetery site, if it's Oak Grove, City Park, just so that it would have already been investigated, so we wouldn't have to delay looking at alternatives.
Is there any other alternative, just in case?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, the team is all, while we're talking about Cedar Grove, we're looking at possible three places in Cedar Grove, which has not been determined which of the three in there is the best. In addition, we are in discussions of other possible alternatives. This is just in the discussion phase, and as we presented last night, and I didn't say it, when we presented six segments, there are teams that are working on each of the segments. Then the entire team will come back together after, before this week is over.
So you're already looking at alternatives?
We, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Outside of Cedar Grove?
Right now, we're in Cedar Grove, and we have three places we're vetting in Cedar Grove. We want to vet in Cedar Grove, three different locations.
Right, well, the issue I'm raising is, what if those aren't available?
And this group will determine some other alternatives. That's what, we're just going to hold, as you saw, everything up there, so we're studying right now three locations.
Okay, but they're all within Cedar Grove.
They are.
My, the question that I'm raising is asking council to consider directing management to look at other sites outside of Cedar Grove just in case. If that's not an issue, council.
Okay. I don't have any problems with looking at other alternatives, but I think we need to focus as much as possible on Cedar Grove and try to make it work. That cemetery is the oldest, it is like a museum. It's got graves from veterans of every war, from the Revolutionary War to World War Two. It's got four-hundred Confederate graves there, so it would be an appropriate place for this monument.
Yeah, I agree, I just, I'm just saying, just in case.
Well, is it a consensus that, and it probably, is it a consensus that if the three doesn't work out, we'll look at another alternative? Okay.
Yeah, I'm saying those should be investigated now, not waiting to, now, these alternatives, will they be presented at our September?
We, this is going to take time, Dr. Whitaker. It's, it's not that we're going to be able to go out, and this is September, and be able to tell the work that needs to be done to determine, all of that which we showed last night on weight and this, and all of those things are being worked concurrently, but I cannot sit here and say on the twenty-fifth, we will not be back on the twenty-fifth of September with this information, because it's, it takes time, we're working it every day, but it takes time to, all of what we share, ground, weight, this, that, we, this is science and engineering that we have to determine.
Will, well, will the three viable, the three sites at Cedar Grove, where we know by the twenty-sixth, if those are viable?
We've got to do this work up here on weight, this, all of that, to determine the viability of any of the sites.
So I'm trying, what's the timeline?
We're meeting, and we're going to come, we've got your, we've got your PERT chart done, we're going to now start looking at timeframe, timeline, with going forward, so I cannot say...
What's the rush? Hold on.
I can't answer.
This is a council meeting.
I didn't understand the question.
The question was, what's the rush? Let's, let's continue to work on those three sites, would be my recommendation. Report back, we got this on the Monday night session.
Right, he's got, on your legal part, right. I'll come back with some update.
And a closed session meeting.
Well, I know, I know, Mayor, you announced at the conference that it was a December time frame.
That would be my desire, Dr. Whitaker, but at the same time, we need to make sure that we do the engineering that's, that needs to be done to move that monument, how it's put together, and how you move it, and how you relocate it.
And that was my issue yesterday, that an RFP incorporating that as a scope of work for the company to do could be appropriate in that case, and I don't see why that couldn't be done.
I understand your point, but it, you're not going to get a response, because it's like asking someone to do an RFP to build a house. They're going to ask how big a house, whether or not it's got a garage, what type of foundation, they'll ask a lot of questions in order to do, to give you an RFP, and...
And they have that information, because the monument is there.
It's in, the answers to those questions are in the work that Dr. Patton and her team put forth, and I want you, whatever, to understand, this is not a delay, but we need to do this in order to move the monument. We need to understand all those aspects in order to get it done.
I'm just, I'm not sure if the city has to do it, that's, that's my question I'm raising, will it be done in an...
It's not going to be done free.
Well, we know that, that's part of the cost, right. And so I don't see why we could not at least put out an RFP to get that.
It won't work. It won't work. It will not work. You're not going to get anybody to respond to an RFP that's not defined like that, and we'll just waste time, and it's not going to work.
How do you know?
Because I've been doing this type of stuff for four and a half decades, and I'm from experience, and it's going to, it's going to end up in a failure, and we don't need a failure in this process.
It's your opinion, I just disagree, but...
Okay. We don't have a need for a closed session, so this is the end of our agenda, and the fourth section is adjourned, and we'll reconvene at seven, and the rest is... And dinner served.
Dinner served.